Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Good evening. The hour of 7:00 PM having arrived, I will call to order this regular meeting of the Keene City Council. This meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Keene's YouTube channel and on Spectrum Channel, our cable TV, on Channel 1302. The video is also streamed on the city's website and is posted by the end of the next business day, barring any technical difficulties. If you would like to receive an electronic City Council packet to reference while viewing future broadcasts, please contact the city clerk's office during business hours or go to the city's website and subscribe to the city meetings email list. The agenda is also accessible from any mobile device. I'd like to recognize our city clerk to recall the role.
Kate M. Bosley, Laura E. Tobin, Michael J. Remmy,
Here.
Randy L. Filio,
Here.
Robert C. Williams,
Here.
Edward J. Haas,
Here.
Philip M. Jones,
Here.
Andrew M. Madison,
Present.
Chris E. Roberts,
Here.
Jacob R. Favelis,
Brian J. Lake,
Here.
Catherine I. Workman, Bettina A. Chadhern,
Here.
Thomas F. Powers,
Here.
Mitchell H. Greenwald.
And I'd like to recognize Councilor Roberts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. I just want to acknowledge that tonight is Extraordinary Women Awards. We normally have a full complement of city councilors, even if they're out of town and on the screen. But that conflict, I think some councilors will be coming in as they free themselves up from that event. But one of our city councilors, Kate Bosley, is being recognized as an extraordinary woman, which indeed she is, and we'll honor her. Yes. Very good. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Greenwald for adoption of our minutes of our previous meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt the minutes of the October second meeting as presented.
Second, by Counselor Filio.
I have one comment on a point of order. Last couple of council meetings, we've had issues that we've referred back to committee. In both times, for some reason, they were attached as an amendment. Well, Section 17 of our Rules of Order, the motion to refer, does not need to be amended. The motion to refer supersedes any of these other motions on the floor as categorized. I know Counselor Remmy mentioned that also. So I just wanted to bring that up. A motion to refer does not need to be attached. It can be just my motion to refer, a positive vote sends it back to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. So noted for future reference, Counselor Remmy.
That's why I was 14 to 1 on one last time. It was 9 to 6, and then we voted on something else. We don't need to do this.
We won't pursue your vote any further. We now know one of those. Okay. The motion's on the table to accept the minutes. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Some announcements. It is Counselor Bosley's birthday in the month of October, and we also get to celebrate Andrew Madison's birthday next week. So, happy birthday, Andrew. Your reward is for aging another year. So, a reminder to the public that our general elections for municipal offices is scheduled for November 4th of this year, just a few weeks away. The polls will be open from 8:00 AM till 7:00 PM, and if there are any questions about elections, or the voting, or what ward to go to, if you don't answer them yourselves, then please refer them to the city clerk's office for her. This weekend is the Pumpkin Festival, so if you hear somebody walking down Main Street saying, "It's the best-versed sausage you've ever had," that would be Counselor Madison. The best-versed sausage. It's his play on words. But the Pumpkin Fest is a wonderful ceremony for the City of Keene. It is this Saturday, and the children's costume parade will begin at 2:00 PM. I believe the entire event concludes at 7:00 PM. And so, please, to the public, come out and have fun in this family-oriented event in downtown Keene. We have set some dates for the Council Goals Workshop, and we hope that you'll add this to your calendars. The first of these is a progress update regarding current goals. That will occur on Monday, November 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in Cohen Hall at the Public Library. And the second workshop will be on Monday, December 1st, at 6:00 in Cohen Hall, and that regards amendments and changes to the council goals. So, I'm sure you'll see these dates again, but there's an early alert for you. The Municipal Services, Facilities, and Infrastructure Committee, their meeting normally held on Wednesday, November 25th, the day before Thanksgiving, will instead be moved to the Tuesday, November 24th, at 6:00 PM, and hopefully that will fit people's calendars better. And for those who recall, we have our first piece of installation art at a public park. It is going to occur at Ash Willett Park on Sunday, October 26th, at 2:00 PM, and you'll find at your desks a communication from Rick McMillan, who is the sponsor of that request to the city. So try to fit that in. I'd also acknowledge that the City Libraries Used Book Sale is taking place October 25th and 6th, the Saturday and Sunday. So, again, another opportunity to support our public library. By the way, the best-versed is something that that fundraiser for our Einbeck Partner City Exchange is really important source of fundraising for that activity. So, remember where to go for a bite to eat. We have several proclamations tonight. I'm going to start with trick-or-treat, and if the parents of city staff, along with their kids, give us a taste, a sample of the costume parade. Small sample. Please come forward.
Well, if you weren't frightening before.
It's a poor imitation of Ellen Romano. I was much friendlier without the glasses, right?
Oh, look how nice they look. Oh, my goodness. Beautiful.
Beautiful costumes. If you're here to join them. Hi. I'm going to read you this proclamation. Hi, we have a net. I'm Jay. Hi.
Everybody wants to see your beautiful costumes, so can you come forward a little bit? And then stand right there.
Oh, nice.
All right.
She's out of here.
Well, I'm going to continue. Whereas Halloween trick-or-treating is a fun costume observed -- I'm sorry, it's a custom. Halloween trick-or-treating is a fun custom observed by many residents of the City of Keene that brings joy and excitement to the children of our community. And whereas past practice has indicated that parents generally favor the late afternoon and early evening hours for trick-or-treat outings, permitting greater visibility and promoting safety during this festive time. And furthermore, while Halloween is a fun activity, we must recognize that accidents might occur while children visit door-to-door showcasing your costumes and requesting treats. The city encourages that trick-or-treaters and their parents or guardians use safe practices during the event, which include ensuring visibility with brightly colored costumes like you're wearing, and to bring flashlights and reflective tape, and to walk on sidewalks when possible. These are the good things to remember. Look both ways when you cross the crosswalks. And, yeah. So now, therefore, I, as mayor, I get to proclaim that Friday, October 31st, shall be known as Trick-or-Treat Day in Keene, and that I ask both parents, parents, and children to cooperate in limiting trick-or-treat time to between 5:30 and 7:30. And I also ask that parents and other responsible adults accompany their young children. And I further request that households indicate their willingness to welcome children by keeping their porches or exterior lights on. That's for everybody. Keep your lights on so that trick-or-treaters call on those that are lit. And then finally, I encourage the cooperation of all the citizens of Keene to make this a happy and safe occasion for the children. Trick-or-treat! To you all, parents. And for each of you. All right. And trick-or-treat. Okay. And there's a chocolate bar in there, too. I thought you'd go for the chocolate. Would you like one? Mom's going to take this one.
It's good practice.
Ah ha. And the little one got two. That's wonderful. Well, thank you for joining us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Bye, girls. Paige, do you want to shake hands?
Bye-bye. No, no. Okay. Bye. Happy trick-or-treating.
Hi, girls. Good job. That was so cute.
Hard to read, Scooter. Okay.
Test your eyesight.
Right. Yeah. Lost that, too. All right. I'd like to next ask, we have some special event going on. It happens in Keene every two years, and it is the Partner City Exchange being hosted here in Keene with our partners from Einbeck, Germany. And I'd like to ask two of their representatives to come forward, Petra Bohnstock and Gerhard Specht, if you would join me, please. I got it. This has been a year in the making. We have a Partner City Committee. It is chaired by John Mitchell and staffed by Will Schaffman and Nicole Howe. They have worked for a year to prepare for this visit. This visit has 16 representatives from the city delegation. But there are two other delegations here in Keene at the same point in time. One that is participating at MC Squared, that has 10 participants, guests from Einbeck. Another that is a choral exchange, that is 29 singers. And their performance is this Sunday at 5:00 PM at the Redfern Arts Center at Keene State College. So try to get your tickets tomorrow in advance. And also, this summer, there was an exchange of the dance troupe that Kristen Leach leads that brought 16 high school students over to Einbeck. And you get a sense, this has really developed into a very fine exchange and partnership between the two cities. On behalf of the City of Keene, I wish to present to Gerhard and to Petra, whereas the concept for our partnership was first proposed by Mayor Pat Russell, following conversations with leaders from Schleicher &amp; Schul, a company that Gerhard was a member of, and a business in Keene with corporate headquarters in Einbeck. And whereas in 2000, Mayor Michael E. J. Blastos formed a volunteer committee to investigate aligning Keene with a city from another country. The partnership was unofficially launched with an initial exchange, and then officially, the partnership was signed by Mayor Blastos and Einbeck Burgermeister, Martin Werner, in 2002. And whereas, the purpose of the Partner City Committee is to promote educational, cultural, athletic, business, and intergovernmental cooperation between the two cities, nurturing mutual understanding, multicultural and global awareness, and friendship. And whereas, the relationship has matured and flourished over the years, marked by numerous activities and exchanges that go well beyond official visits. These have included formal delegation visits, student athletic and school exchanges, cultural exchanges, business internships, and partnerships. And whereas, this year, in 2025, the city is excited to welcome 55 people from three different exchange groups to Keene, high school students, choral, and our official delegation members. And they are present with us tonight, some of them, and thank you for joining us. And whereas, we honor and thank all of the host families, and some of them are here, too. But think about it. It's 55 host families, or 55 guests being hosted by families. I have two, and others have as many as three. But we want to thank those host families, those who provide the venues, like the Colonial Theater this evening, and those who provide meals and contributions to promote the Partner City Committee for making these wonderful exchanges possible. Now, therefore, I, J. Con, as mayor, do hereby proclaim the enduring value of the partner-city relationship between Keene, New Hampshire, and Einbeck, Germany, and I urge all residents to recognize the importance of these international bonds and to celebrate the 23rd anniversary of our official partnership and the commitment to continue these valuable exchanges in the future. Thank you very much for being here and representing your city.
Thank you very much.
We very much appreciate having you.
Thank you.
And I offer the floor to Petra and Gerhard to offer a few words.
Thank you very much, Dave, for the warm words. And in behalf of the citizens and the city council and the administration of the City of Einbeck, I want to say thank you that you are hostess us, and it's a really nice and warm welcome. And I think it's so important that we have friendships even over the oceans, and for us it's important. And it's also important to have peace in the world. If you know each other, then it's much easier to understand. And this friendship is really something special for us. So, thank you very much that we can stay here, and we invite you the next year to come to Germany, to our city Einbeck. Thank you very much.
They're good.
Yeah. What else can I say? So Petra, as the vice mayor of Einbeck, she is the official person here today. So, anyway, we would like to thank you very much. It is really, to me especially, because I had some history here, a couple of years ago, maybe tens of years ago. As many of you may know, Optical Ave was a place where Schleicher &amp; Schul was active, and the company was sold. So for me, it was coming back to a place where I recognized Colony Mill as a gift shop. A couple of things have changed. So, anyway, it was a great honor and a great pleasure to be here again, to meet new people, and to really find new friends. And I guess, so we had the pleasure to host also people from Keene, and I hope somebody else may join the group next year, because we have, as Petra already mentioned somehow today, we have the 50th event of the so-called Eulenfest, which is a big event going on in Einbeck. So everybody may have some idea to go there. Super. Yeah. The best one.
And to our German guests, if you'd just wave your hands, just to give a demonstration to about half of the group. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last, not least, it is the 30th anniversary of the Menadok Peer Support Organization. I'd like to ask their chairman of their board and the current executive director to, to join us along with Ms. Calender. Eli, if I've butchered your title, there are too many titles that you own today. So whereas the Menadok Peer Support is celebrating its 30th anniversary, serving the Menadok region with a powerful mission to provide health, mental health support through a mutually supportive peer community built on connections and the belief that recovery is possible. And whereas for three decades, Menadok Peer Support has offered all of its vital services completely free of charge to adults, focusing primarily on the 23 towns of Cheshire County, where it has supported this past year by over 350 people. And whereas, Menadok Peer Support utilizes a proven evidence-based peer model, offering essential programs, including 30 or more weekly peer-led support groups, transitional living programs, step up and step down services, life-saving crisis respite, and stays to help individuals stabilize without hospitalization. And whereas by deploying this effective peer support model, Menadok Peer Support significantly reduces isolation and builds resilience, leading to fewer emergency room visits, psychiatric hospitalizations, and law enforcement encounters that result in cost savings throughout the county. And whereas Menadok Peer Support extends its reach through community outreach at sites like the Cheshire County Jail and Keene State College, while actively collaborating with key partners such as Cheshire Medical Center and The Doorway to provide coordinated care and ensure maximum community impact. Now therefore, be it resolved that I hereby congratulate Menadok Peer Support on their 30th anniversary and urge all residents to recognize and celebrate their profound commitment and contributions to the mental health and well-being of our community. Thank you so much for your service. And I'll offer the mic to Eli.
I just wanted to say thank you for this proclamation. And even though we've been here for 30 years, I think that a lot of people are still either just hearing about Menadok Peer Support for the first time, or you don't really know much about what we do. So I encourage people to look into what we do. And as it was mentioned, all our services are free. So it's a vital service to the community that is a big need, and we're thankful for this. We have our annual meeting next Thursday at Delegation Hall at 5:30 PM, if anyone is interested.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much for joining us and that announcement. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. So we have two public hearings this evening. And I'm going to ask our clerk to read the notice of the hearing. And then I'll recognize our city attorney to go over the ballot question that is raised by these two hearings.
And our first hearing is on a question related to Keno. And notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the Keene City Council relative to a request from a Keene City Councilor to place a question on the 2025 Municipal General Ballot that would prohibit the operation of Keno in the city of Keene. That request was granted by the Keene City Council on September 4th, 2025, with a required informational public hearing to be held at least, at least 15 days, but not more than 30 days before the question is to be voted on. Keno is any game where a player purchases a ticket from a field of 80 numbers and selects a specific amount of numbers. A random number generator employed by the New Hampshire Lottery Commission chooses 20 numbers at random, and the player is paid out against his or her original wager. All net proceeds collected by the Lottery Commission under RSA 284:47 shall be deposited into the Education Trust Fund established by RSA 198:39 for the purpose of providing grants to public schools and to chartered public schools toward the cost of operation of an approved full-day kindergarten program. This request is in response to the passage of House Bill 737, which amended the local option provisions in statute related to the operation of Keno effective June 1, 2027. The legislation permits Keno by default within the boundaries of a municipality unless the question is put to voters prior to that effective date. The wording of the question shall be substantially as follows. Shall we prohibit the operation of Keno games within the city or town? Per order of the mayor and councillors of the city of Keene this 4th day of September 2025.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our city attorney, just to review the legislation that prompted the city, the council to ask for this public hearing and to ask for this to be placed on the November 4th ballot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's right. This topic was first raised to the city council via communication from Council Favalese on June 19th, 2025. The matter had then been referred to the Finance Operations Personnel Committee. The question raised to the city council via that communication was whether to add the question to the municipal general election ballot about prohibiting Keno in the city. On August 28th, Council Favalese's letter to the council was discussed at FOP, which also heard from our city clerk, Terry Hood, who provided some history on the question of Keno in the city before. The city council voted on September 4th to carry out the intent of FOP, which was to place the question on the ballot and also to schedule this hearing tonight, October 16th. Now, tonight's hearing is a requirement of the statute as references a new way to look at the question rather than voting to allow it, voting to prohibit it. The requirement for this hearing comes from RSA 287D32. And as stated in the notice, the question that is going to be voted on is, shall we prohibit the operation of Keno games within the city? The hearing tonight is not intended to be deliberations by the city council on that question. The question's already on the ballot, regardless of what is discussed this evening. Instead, the hearing tonight is a requirement by the statute in anticipation of the voters deciding this question through their ballots. So the intent of the hearing is to provide that forum and to provide education and notice of the question that's on the ballot. And note that from here, there's no referral to a committee or further action by the city council. The next step from here and the final step is the ballot box by the voters.
I remind our voters twice before, this question has been posed to the voters of Keene. The reason this is not effective here yet is that both times that motion was defeated by public ballot. This time, the, the request to the city is, it will be legal in our city unless the city votes to prohibit Keno within its city. So it's a change in the statute, and that's, that's the nature of the change. We have with us this evening the commissioner of the New Hampshire Lottery system. I want to thank and welcome Commissioner McIntyre to come forward. And we have a presentation, I believe. Thank you, Charlie, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Charlie McIntyre. I was told I was getting a proclamation. Was I wrong in that respect? I was at least hoping for some candy, you know?
Very good.
I think you had some leftover. I'm gonna get through this real quick, obviously. Fundamentally, my job is threefold. One is to raise money for education, of which, if my back of the envelope math is correct, Keene gets about $3.5 million a year of adequacy grants from the New Hampshire Lottery revenues for the J. Trust Fund. Last year, we generated $207 million for the citizens of the state. When I started, that was $62 million, and I've more, we've more than tripled it. It does not reflect on my salary, regrettably. Two is to actually provide something fun to do. I say this as a person who actually walks into a casino, not one of the ones I regulate, but other states, I'll walk, I've been in a casino virtually every gnat on the planet. And three is to support local businesses. We have 1,500 retailers across the state, all of whom derive some or significant amounts of money from the sale of what we provide. And that's fundamentally why we're here. Obviously, we have a PowerPoint. I'm not gonna read it, because I assume you all can read. And what is Keno 603? It's literally just a game where you can pick out of 80 numbers, up to a certain amount. It's, I believe it's 12 maximum. Most people play three and four, because it's the most likely to win. Most of the prizes are below $500, which means the IRS doesn't get anything. It's paid off at the bar, and the bartender usually gets a good tip. At least, I hope they do. Be rude otherwise. It's sold from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and this is the only game that's actually specific to New Hampshire. And as you can see, we essentially have a self-service terminal, that big orange thing that you couldn't miss if you were blind, is usually the way in which folks play it. It's a self-service device. We're freeing up the bartender from not having to actually do anything other than pay off a winning ticket and hopefully get tiptoeed. There are 95 communities in New Hampshire that actually do this, which is misleading because there are a number of communities up north that don't actually have anybody that would qualify. So there are whole swaths of regions in the North Country that don't actually have a retailer that would be available. And so it's about 65% of the state's population lives in an area that does, that sells Keno. The larger towns that don't are you folks, regrettably, Portsmouth and Concord. Legislative changes are what they are. I'm in the executive branch, so that was done by Mr. Khan's former colleagues. And we just, as I often say, I'm not the, I don't make policy, we're the instrument of policy. But certainly, it has expanded somewhat. It increased to retailers, where community stores can now sell it. They're not allowed to use a monitor, but you folks are obviously fans of monitors. And we moved the license fee, and we, it's like I said, it's now permitted in community stores and the like, only in towns that have approved it. This is the commissions that have, retailers have earned over the time, $60 million in total. More importantly, we did research through UNH survey, more than three quarters of the retailers who sold Keno responded that their business increased dramatically when they added it as part of the sales. And obviously, this is the benefit of the retailers. It increases foot traffic dramatically. The people stay longer in the business itself. And I can say this, because I was here last time, and I didn't need glasses, I need glasses now to read this stuff. I'm an ex-prosecutor, I'm an ex-law enforcement, and one of the main points to worry about was issues regarding law enforcement and criminal behavior. We've had virtually none in the last, in the years. We've had it across the state, virtually none. And so it was a concern, a concern has not been borne out, and certainly, I submit it to you for consideration. Benefits to municipalities are obviously the support of businesses in the, in the community you folks service. There are a number of taverns and bars that have, that would hope you don't vote for this, because they're across the border, and they see foot traffic. The number one retailer in Keno in the capital area is in Bow, on the southern border of Concord. And so, as you can imagine, retail behavior doesn't know geography, so folks who want to play Keno go to those locations. And so, that being said, I wanted to do this quickly, you guys have a long agenda, and I wanted to get through this quickly, and just wanted to answer any questions you have. And, and obviously, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your hospitality, even if I didn't get candy.
I've got some extras.
I'm happy to answer questions anybody has about this.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charlie, thank you for being here. I'm, I'm just questioning the wording on the ballot. Why is it prohibit, which means you have to vote no if you want yes?
There was done, so this, this wasn't a bill that we submitted, this was done in the legislature. And so that's why the wording is the wording. It was, it was not something we said to a rep or a senator, please, we were looking for this. It was done by them. And I think it was meant to sort of make it affirmative rather than sort of, we had to get on the ballot. And I can say, like, listen, I had to go around every city and town. In fact, I think I had been here twice. I think I'd been here twice.
I think one time you sent somebody, because you were unable to.
Oh, okay, yeah. And I always felt like I was running for governor, because I toured the state. I mean, I was in Berlin three times. And so I'd rather just say, if you don't want it, say no, but every time we have to come out on the ballot, yes, because in multiple jurisdictions, they said no the first time, and then it was passed as yes. And so I think there was more of a concern in that respect. But like I said, I don't remember specifically the logic behind the wording.
All right. It just sounds like it can be confusing to the public.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just to be clear to the public, I think your point is, shall we prohibit the operation? If you want to prohibit the operation, you would vote yes. If you wish to allow for it, you would vote no.
That's my point, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Council Favalese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. I just kind of want to clarify my understanding of what the state allows a community to do in terms of regulation that might be a little bit different than other forms of gambling like a casino. So as I understand it, the state law here is that there is grocery stores, convenience stores, bars, taverns, all of these places, somewhere anywhere that has, I think, a specific kind of liquor license can offer Keno through their hours of operation, even if those hours of operation are 24/7.
Yes.
Is there, are there any steps that the city can take to regulate those hours of operation for Keno specifically, or would that involve zoning changes for the underlying kind of establishment?
That would involve zoning changes to underlying establishment, correct.
I, I appreciate that. I just, I think that's a, an important difference between kind of Keno and a brick and mortar casino, another form of gambling that cities maybe have a little bit more regulatory control over.
So Keno, when it was first passed, it followed the, the model that had been passed before. Lottery itself was passed in 64, and the cities and towns could then vote not to do it. I know this because a couple of cities and towns called it and said, we voted against this in 1965, and we forgot, and we licensed a bunch of retailers. What do we do? I was like, I, I don't want to tell you. The store had been in operation for 20 years. And so that, the model was originally, I think it was 20 out of 200 and some voted against it in 63, 64.
Thank you.
And just to, I'm curious, too, about any establishment that has a liquor license? Is it any, any eating, any eatery, any restaurant, or is it just those that have a liquor license are eligible to offer Keno?
So there's a distinction. So if it was, to have a monitor, you have to actively be pouring.
Pouring.
Pouring, correct. So it's not a community store that sells a six-pack of beer. It has to be a place that has a full active pouring license in order to have it. I think I did the math, I think you have about 50 in Keene, and our history has been about 25% of jurisdictions, bars and taverns will take it. If you sell more beer than Chardonnay, that's the type of folks we sort of, that's our, that's our crowd. And so, and then convenience stores can sell it, but they, there's no monitor, and the purchase, you wouldn't notice the difference between it and a Powerball ticket, because it's literally, there's no monitor, they're not staying around, they're just buying a ticket and walking away.
Very good. Council Lake.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Favalese's question sparked a question that I, that I have about the zoning piece of it. So if, if we vote to not restrict it, and so we do allow for, for Keno to, to be available here, are we then able to pass zoning regulations to restrict where it can be? Or if a place is allowed to have pouring license, is that Or if a place is allowed to have pouring license, is that then up to the lottery commission at that point?
It's never been a quest, nobody's, that I'm aware of, no jurisdiction has voted zoning for Keno that I'm aware of, and I have to confer regarding, because that's an interpretation of law, I have a law degree, but I don't practice law anymore, and so I'd ask the AG regarding the interpretation of, because like, for example, we do recognize and we do honor if you folks pass zoning regarding charitable gambling, if you say, has to be in these zones, we honor those in the zones, because the jurisdiction has to come to you, the jurisdiction, the operator has to come to you for the building plan, here's, here's the curb cuts, here's what the signs look like, et cetera, and so your zoning very much plays into that. These, there's no real zoning issues related to, we don't change the building at all. You know, we, the cabling goes inside the building, you don't see it, the monitor goes inside the building, you don't see it, and so, I don't know the answer to that question, Counselor, to your point.
But, but to your knowledge, nobody has denied it in any manner in the past.
No, no. If you wanted to keep it downtown, if you wanted to keep it sort of commercial areas, certainly, it seems like a reasonable thing, it's just you would worry about competing businesses having a benefit. I can only say this because experience, when we pass sports betting, we have a barrier on the state, three and fifty feet for sports betting, because you can't be in another state betting across state lines. And we, Portsmouth, there were two sports bars, one was within that zone, one was outside that zone. Every patron moved to the other bar, and I got more phone calls than I've ever gotten in my life, because the sports bar pages disappeared. And so, then we had to sort of readjust the zone in which this bar, because it was on the Piscataqua River, which is half Maine, half New Hampshire. So, I don't know, it would be difficult, but certainly, I can, we can look at it.
Counselor Roberts. Oh, and Counselor Lake, did you want to follow?
If I may, just a, just a follow-up to it, I would be interested in hearing either from the city attorney, or from the commissioner if you find out more.
Yeah.
About the ability for the city to pass additional regulations on that, I do, I do worry about if we, if this were to be open, and it could go into any spot, I know we just went through a lot of regulation around charitable gaming facilities, and so this is a, a topic that's kind of fresh on our mind about being able to contemplate where these things should and shouldn't be in the city.
Do you wish to opine?
Just to say that I would look into it, this being something we haven't had in Keene before, it's a fresh question for me, and I can, I can look into it, I'd also be very interested if the AGs has a opinion on it.
I also have a compliance officer who is an exceptionally talented litigator lawyer, so I'd ask her to look at it for me. As the head of the agency, I don't, like I said, I don't practice law in a long time.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was looking at the PowerPoint handout, and it has Keno 603 commission, commissions by fiscal year, and it's got a lot of numbers, but they can also be confusing. It says over fifty-nine million in Keno sales, four-point-seven million were commissions for eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars, so that comes out to twenty-two dollars a day. So, that would leave fifty-four-point-three million. How much of that fifty-four-point-three million went back to players, and what portion, how much went back to the education fund?
So, I can do the backward math if you want me to, because I think the fundamental question you're asking is how much goes back to education. On this, it's about nineteen cents on the dollar. So on the, it was meant, it was passed as a funding mechanism for kindergarten, for kindergarten, full funding, and so it's about ten million a year, give or take, goes back to the education trust fund. I don't believe it's now restricted anymore to kindergarten, I think it's now just goes back to the fund education. It was removed as sort of a dedicated fund, with a new dedicated fund, and now it's just, goes part of the education grants the state offers. And I have zero percent to do with it. We just make money, I literally have no, in terms of how much you get, and who gets for what, so, that's part of my job.
And those numbers you offered earlier is the complete dollar amount that the city of Keene receives.
Yes.
From the education trust fund.
That's a lot of revenue.
Which is lot, from just the lottery revenue?
Yes, yes.
But the three million includes liquor revenue.
So with last year, we were two-hundred-and-seven million dollars, you folks are twenty-three-thousand people, out of one-point-three million dollars, I did the back double of math, so, yeah, that's, yeah, I, it was my estimate around three-point-five, it varies by city and town, like Wolfboro gets nothing, and other towns get more, and so, like I said, I think it's back of the envelope, it's around three-point-five, but I could be slightly off on the other.
Thank you. Counselor Roberts.
So if, if I look at this, and we just go off the cuff, so, basically, it's about eight dollars per person for the state of New Hampshire, that's what comes up with the, the amount of money when you're looking at how much money that goes into the education fund. Because a little bit more than a million and a half people, about a million and a half.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's about eight, it's about eight bucks a hat, sure.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, there's a far fewer students in the mix, but yes, it's about eight dollars. You have to understand, if fifty-nine million dollars in total sales, that's a lot of churn, we call that really handle, if you win, you play again, if, you know, it's, there's a lot of churn in that, it's not, fifty-nine million dollars is transferred over, it's if you want a hundred bucks, you're going to play again, and maybe you win, you lose, it's a process.
I just wanted to clear it up.
Of course, yeah, yeah, of course.
Because it's confusing.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Williams.
Do these standalone Keno machines accept credit cards?
No, no, as a practical matter, there's no law against it, but as a, as a matter of conscience, we don't accept credit cards on anything we do. Not on our lottery platform, not on our DraftKings platform, it's just, we're very much against it, I don't want folks to play with money that they don't have, can't think, but thank you for the question.
Thank you for offering to be here tonight, I think there are members in the public that would also like to address that.
Of course.
You're welcome to stay and hear this. And I would like to see if there are members of the public that, yeah, you can, you can take a seat.
Oh, yeah.
Back there, if, if we need you, you'll, you'll, I'm sure, give us a wave.
I will indeed, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And yes, are there members of the public that wish to speak this evening? If you do, just ask you to come up to the mic, identify yourself, your place of residence.
Hi, I'm Dory Maston. I live in Swansea, however, I own the poorhouse across the street here on downtown. I know what's going on the ballot regardless, but for you, and when your constituents call and ask, I want you to hear a bar owner's side of things, so that then you get our point. I think we, all of us pretty well know what I've been through with having a casino downtown, I was pretty smacked around, and that didn't happen. This is an opportunity now for us, all of us downtown, to get a small piece of the pie, even though it's small, and share it amongst all of us. We just approved the new city, the new casino's location, which I'm happy for them, and I could be mistaken, so correct me if I'm wrong, but the city now gets a piece of the pie on that casino, on those earnings, am I wrong?
We're eligible to, to apply for a license, limited license.
Doesn't mean you're going to, but it does mean you're able to. With that said, if the city can get a piece of the pie, I think the small business owners should also be allowed a small piece of the pie. If you've ever been to Mama McDonough's on a weekend, you go for brunch, a good chunk of our community goes there, and they're having brunch with their friends, and they're playing Keno, and it's innocent fun. And, I mean, I go there too, I don't necessarily play Keno, but I grab my MegaBox ticket while I'm there, but a lot of people do go there, and that's a draw for them. And those are people that live in Keene. I mean, I see my customers there, and they're there for Keno. And even if it's allowed in Keene, not every bar is going to get it, not every, I mean, I mean, maybe, but I don't foresee the stage, or the tavern, or Grenada getting a Keno machine. It's going to be, you know, your, your local pubs and the working man's bar that chooses to grab a beer and grab a ticket. But, we, they can also do that at Cumberland Farms, so, I just ask that it, all of you take that into consideration, all of us downtown are about to face the big dig, whether we like it or not, and most don't, but we're going to hit it. So, this is another chance to get a small piece of the pie, especially, it will help to get us through the next few years, so, and it's just a step, and all these other communities are doing it, I think it's time, we should also do it, and stop sending our community out of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maston. Others in the public, you just, see a show of hands, how many people would want to address this? We got, okay, one of you, please come forward.
Peter Hansel, sixty-one Bradford Road in Keene. I guess I'm, I'm a little confused about the process. I assume that this, that the city council is going to approve whether or not to put it on the ballot as a referendum item for the, for the general election.
And that we have done.
It's already on the ballot.
This is the public hearing.
So, what is the city council's responsibility at this point? Do they have to wait for the results of that ballot, or does the city council have any say in what happens now?
I think that, those questions were, were sort of answered, but let me, let me try, we have to have, it, it will be legal in Keene if we do not put this on the ballot. So in order to give the people of Keene a voice in that decision, it's on the ballot.
Okay, so, any decision that city council makes is, is not relevant to what happens?
It's irrelevant from this point forward.
So I guess my comments are not really addressed to you, they should probably be addressed to the, the city, to the public at large.
This is a public record, and that's, I think, why your comments can be appropriate.
But I, yeah, so I appreciate that, and, and I just wanted to make a few comments about the quality of our city. Mayor Khan made reference to the visitors from Einbeck this week, which I happen to be a host of, of three, three Einbecker's here, that doesn't refer to the beer, that refers to the people. I've, I've had the privilege of going to Einbeck in the past, in two thousand and twelve, where we dedicated the Keene plots over there, which is a plaza that has Keene's name on it, similar in, in respect to the fountain that was dedicated here in our central square. It's a great relationship. But I, I want to also mention, this, this past, just bring it into your thoughts, this past month, what's happened in Keene. We've had a pride festival, we've had the international, the Mananok International Film Festival, we've had something just last week called Radically Rural, which hopefully some of you participated in. I've been going to Radically Rural for, ever since it started, I think, and every year it seems to get better and better. One of the key things about Radically Rural is how can we make our rural communities more, better, and more competitive with large commercial, or large urban environments? Not too many dollars are spent on rural communities, we have tracks that, that look at journalism, that look at arts, that look at environment, all different tracks that, that we try to cover during the, the two or three days that people are here, here. This year, we had people, I think, eight people from Hawaii, they came all the way to Keene to learn about how to make their, their community more, more successful. Not once in all of the tracks that I've attended did anybody say, you need more gambling to make, to make your community more competitive. I've been following the gambling issue in, in New Hampshire for twenty years or so, when they first started talking about this. Actually, I guess it goes back to the sixties, but that, I, but I think more recently, maybe shortly after the two thousand, we started looking at the type of gambling we're seeing today. A lot has changed in those twenty years, now you can have, do online gambling, you can do it on your computer, you can do it betting on every pitch that a pitcher throws in, in a, in a baseball game, it's ubiquitous. I just want to say that I, I don't think Keene, it's in our culture to allow more gambling than we, than is already available to our community, so I, I hope that the community decides to say no to Keno. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansel. Mrs. Hansel, the wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Bridgette Hansel, and I live on Bradford Road, and I have a few comments to make about this whole issue. As you all know, our state has tried through the years to fund our state budget, first with liquor, and then tobacco sales, and now that those sources are drying up, we are looking to another unsustainable source, gambling. I'm concerned about the short-term fix for our state budget that offers no clear long-term solutions. I'm also concerned about the impact gambling, and in specific, Keno gambling will have on the social fabric of our community, though all types of gambling can be addictive, and I did not hear any of that addressed by Mr., Mr., the Keno guy.
Meck, Meck, tire.
The specific nature of Keno gambling makes it especially so, especially so addictive due to the instant gratification and fast pace of the game. This week, again, I'm echoing what my husband said, we were, we are hosting these wonderful visitors from Einbeck, and it made me realize, when I was showing off Keene, what a unique community we have, full of arts, a diverse downtown, a world-class public library, and I do not see gambling in our future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Putnam?
Hello, I'm Jim Putnam, I live at one sixty-eight Court Street, about two and a half blocks from where we are now. Most days of the week, I walk to an office that is between my house and, and here, in the central district, so I spend a lot of time downtown in Keene, and my wife and I really enjoy walking downtown, and we enjoy patronizing the businesses in, throughout Keene, but especially downtown, the ones that we can, we can walk to. I completely agree with Peter and Bridgette Hansel that have spoken before me. I think there, we are fortunate to be in a community that understands the downside of gambling, especially this kind of gambling. Keno is a form of gambling, and it can lead to unhealthy, addictive behavior. We don't need Keno in our community, and Keene citizens have rejected Keno twice already in the past, and I am confident, or I certainly hope that they will again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Putnam. Any other members of the public wishing to address the question before us? Yes, I see somebody in the rear. Thank you, please name an address.
This is my first time up here, so apologize if I'm nervous, Warren Steinberg, Concord Hill Drive in Keene.
Thank you, Warren.
So a couple of things, I was just doing a little research, and our, it looks like our partners in Einbeck, Germany, also have legal gambling, including a Keno-type thing in their city, so I think that it's not just in large cities, it's smaller cities as well that are incorporating this. I think that someone mentioned that there's a lot of online options available right now, and we get nothing from that. So somebody can sit at home and gamble all they want, they can feed their gambling addiction, if that's what we're worried about, but they're going to find a way, we have a casino in the city that they can go to, that's legal. So what this does is very different than that, though. It's not at a casino, it's not online, it's not money going to some corporation out in some random city somewhere. This is for the local business owners of bars and taverns, as well as convenience stores, and it gives them an ability to generate additional income. We've seen lots of stores and businesses all along Main Street closing down, and it's, they all say the same thing, they're just not making enough income. So I understand that this might not be one of the ways for the state to, to find a way to make more money, but it will help the small business owners that are struggling to get by every day. So I think that, let me see, I have one other note here. Oh, yeah, the big dig that's coming, that's going to be two years of us trying our hardest to stay alive and, and keep the, the downtown area going, so I, I just believe that this would help those small business owners, even though it's a small percentage, every little bit helps. Thank you.
Warren. Warren, could you just offer an address? I didn't.
I, I did. 36th Concord Hill Drive in Keene.
Okay, thank you very much.
Maybe I didn't say it into the mic, I apologize.
I just didn't, I didn't hear it. Okay, we are at the point of having heard from everyone that wished to speak?
May I speak again? May I comment on some, another speaker's testimony?
Sure.
Dory Mastin, I was just up here. I guess I just want to make sure everyone notices that out of the speakers tonight, casinos shouldn't just be allowed when they benefit someone's family or family member. They should be allowed regardless of who you are, what your last name is, and what property you own and how, or how long you've lived in Keene. Anyone who's eligible for a casino, or a casino license, or gambling, everyone should be included, not just those names that are well-known. Thank you.
At this point, going once, not gonna ask that two more times. Seeing no other hands up, we'll close that public hearing. And there will be no further testimony on this received by the city clerk. This, we already know the outcome of this going on the ballot. And you'll see this question coming on November 4th, when you pick up your general election ballot. So we will move on to our second public hearing. And thank those who attended tonight, Pro and Khan, for being here. I'd ask the clerk to read the notice of our second public hearing.
Yes, and this public hearing relates to social districts. And on a notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the Keene City Council relative to a request from a city councillor to place a question on the 2025 municipal general ballot that would allow social districts in the city of Keene. That request was granted by the Keene City Council on October 2nd, 2025, with a required informational public hearing to be held at least 15 days, but not more than 30 days, before the question is to be voted on. Social district means a defined outdoor area in which a person may consume alcoholic beverages sold by a licensee. This term does not include the licensee's premises or an extended area of such premises allowed under RSA 178:24. This is in response to House Bill 467, which allows any city or town to allow the operation of social districts according to the provisions of 178:35. The wording of the question shall be substantially as follows. Shall we allow the operation of social districts within the city of Keene? If a majority of those voting on the question vote yes, social districts may be operated within the city or town, subject to the passage of an ordinance by the city council permitting such districts in compliance with RSA 178:35, per order of the mayor and councillors of the city of Keene this second day of October 2025.
Okay. And again, I'd ask, does the city attorney wish to address the, this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be very repetitive to what I said about 30 minutes ago. Just a brief synopsis, synopsis of where we are, what we're doing with this public hearing. The topic was first raised to our city council via communication from Councillor Remi on June 19th of this year. We referred the matter to FOP. Question was raised to city council via that communication of whether to add the question to the municipal general election ballot about authorizing social districts as described in the newly created statute RSA 17834 within the city. On September 25th, Councillor Remi's letter to council was discussed at FOP, which also heard from yours truly, about the various logistics incumbent on the city within a social district as described in the statute. The FOP committee recommended to place the question of whether to allow social districts within the city onto the November 4th, 2025 municipal general election ballot. And the city council voted on October 7th to carry out the intent of that committee to place a question on the ballot and to schedule this hearing tonight on October 16th. Tonight's hearing is a requirement of the statute RSA 17834. The hearing tonight is not intended to be deliberations by the city council on that question. Question has been answered and the question as read by the clerk is already on the ballot, regardless of what's discussed this evening. Instead, the hearing is a requirement by the statute in anticipation of the voters deciding the question through their ballots. Note that from here, there is no referral to committee or further action by the city council. The next and final step will be the voting on November 4th. Thanks.
We put the question of this out to the Liquor Commission to see if they wish to address this. And they indicated back to the city clerk that they were not a part of this legislation and so did not wish to be present this evening. And I, I know members of the city council have given some thought to this. Maybe just to open up a little bit of discussion for the public's benefit. Again, this is for the public record, that I'd ask those who might be in favor or opposed, just a, a short statement would be helpful. Councillor Remi.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify what, because I was the one who put it on the ballot. This is another one that came forward. And the reason I'm staying seated, because I have actually the language of the, the bill in front of me, in case there's questions. But the, putting it on the ballot was basically to give the voters a chance to answer. So you heard at the last meeting where we put this on the ballot, it was 14 to 1. I promise not all 14 of those councillors that voted yes to put it on the ballot are in favor of the idea of doing it. But they thought the voters deserve the opportunity to weigh in on whether or not it should be allowed. If it was then allowed by the ballot, so if the entire city voted yes, it was unanimous. Everybody wanted it, it doesn't immediately become legal. It would still come back to this body to put in an ordinance that would control it, to set up boundaries, to set up hours. It's all laid out in the RSA, basically, of what we're allowed to rule on, when, where, it would affect the license holders in that area. And those license holders would have an opportunity to opt in and out. They don't have to participate just because they're there. So there's a lot of flexibility in there. And the whole point of it was to put it on the ballot. And then there's gonna be, if it passed, there'd be a ton of deliberation by this body, which by then I probably won't be on, to determine what the right answers are for it. And if it goes unanimously against, then we don't do it. But the reason we want to put it up is because it has to go through a ballot process. And because as a city, we don't have a town meeting process. We don't vote yes now, we've gotta wait two years to change our mind. So it's one of those where giving ourselves the flexibility to make a decision, give the public flexibility to weigh in, without having to wait two years.
Councillor Feliz.
Thank you, Mayor Khan. A question for the city attorney, just around the logistics of this, because the wording of this is just different than the previous question we heard. And so knowing both of these will be on the ballot, I, I want to have the opportunity to make a really kind of clear distinction for the public. In this case, a yes vote actually does mean yes. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct. The yes vote on the question of shall we allow is what's required to authorize it to be here. If it goes no, it's not gonna just fall into play.
Hey, Councillor Greenwald.
You seem to have lost the procedure of standing when speaking, so I'll bring that back. And perhaps these are rhetorical questions, because there's no one really to ask. I'll just put it, I was the one, by the way. I think this is the worst idea that I have heard in my 30-plus years on city council. I'll just put that out. Now the rhetorical questions. The state has no regulations on how this should be implied. We, as a city, have no regulations on how this should be employed. As I'm aware, there is no city in the state that is already doing this. And there are some things that we'd like to be the pioneer. This is not one of these. I think that this question is very, very confusing. At least it's asked straight up. The previous question with Keno, I could see that was manipulated to kind of fool the people. But, you know, we'll see how that one turns out. This, at least, a yes is a yes, a no is a no. But the general public really doesn't know all these questions that I'm asking. And they're apt to just say yes. And perhaps, as Councillor Remi put out, we will have all kinds of rules, regulations and whatnot. And hopefully it will stick. But being around a little while and seeing how things go, we're concerned right now, another council might be a little less concerned and will perhaps enact some regulations that are gonna really create some damage. This city has gone a long way to, to control excessive alcohol use amongst the student population. And this, if enacted, is gonna go right for them. And I'm just very concerned. And that is why, it's not that I didn't want to hear from the public, but I just don't think the public is gonna be informed enough to really say no when they're gonna want no. In speaking with all of you, like, one-on-one, as Councillor Remi said, I know you're not necessarily vastly in favor of it. But just gotta put it out there to the public. And I hope there will be others that will speak and the public will listen. This is a bad idea, so vote no.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else wishing to speak? Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity, if this does pass on the ballot, it still doesn't do anything unless we create ordinances. Correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that the public is clear on that. Even if it passes, it doesn't mean we're gonna have it, even if it does pass in November.
Yes. And, and to the other side of that, if it does not pass, there is nothing to prohibit this from coming back, because it's still state law to be able to create it. So it, it is possible that in two years, for the next general election, maybe other communities have adopted those kinds of rules. There might be some precedent. And, and the city council might have a different opinion two years from now than what some of you have expressed about your personal feelings. Anyway, just to point that out. Councillor Haas.
Your Honor, what this does do, in addition to the question prior, is tell the citizenry that, "Come out and vote. Come out and vote, it's really important. Let's have a great turnout at this otherwise quiet municipal election. It's important stuff. Please come out and vote." Thank you.
Yes, good, good message. Thank you. Councillor Williams.
Yeah, we have a lot of festivals here in Keene and they're a lot of fun and family-friendly. And I, I guess I just don't think the addition of more drunk people would benefit them. And so that's why I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Think we've, huh? No, not at all.
I just wanted to mention that both the city attorney and I had chatted about the two questions on the ballot and the, the different sort of tenor of each question and that confusion that might cause. So she reached out to the solicitor in Concord, where they are also having both questions on their ballot at the same time. And we reached out to the state of New Hampshire. And the Secretary of State did tell me that as long as our charter does not oppose us putting literature out for voters, that we are able to do so. I was under the impression we could not. So we do have some information that we will be sharing with voters on our website and at the polls on Election Day, explaining what a yes vote means or what a no vote means on both questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, seeing the public opening it up, certainly. Ms. Cost?
Good evening, thank you. Robin Cost, 51 Railroad Street. Excuse me, my voice is going. As a resident of downtown, I see what happens downtown every day. I'm concerned about the students. I'm concerned about how the parents would feel sending their children to a town that would allow open drinking on the streets. I want you to consider the families who live in the area, who walk, who shop, who walk their dogs, who dine at the restaurants, who bring their grandchildren and their children into town. I can understand having drinking allowed associated with festivals. And I think having a defined drinking area, as we have had for taste of Keene and everything else, is wonderful. I'm a person who likes to put policy before a decision. And I think this is a question that really needs a policy before a vote. Obviously, it's going to the vote. But I would want every council member to think hard about what policies and ordinances they would put in place if this is voted for. I'll give you some examples. What would the hours be? Would it be within distance of the school, where a child walking home from school? Would it be during hours when parents are picking up their kids? Would it be late at night? There are a lot of policy decisions that would have to be made here. And the amount of effort that would need to go into that. And you're talking about educating the public. The public will not know what needs to go into ordinances. So I am definitely personally against this. But also, it's putting the horse, the cart before the horse. Policies and decisions have to be made before an ordinance like this is put upon the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to address the question?
Me, yeah.
Again, please identify name and address.
Dory Mastin. Live in Swansea, own property in Keene, but also own a bar. So I just want to speak from bartenders' conversations when this first went public. Joe Schmo is at Poorhouse Lab, wherever, and they've had a few beers. They get done there and then they go to their car and they take out their nips, or whatever's in their car. They put them in their clear plastic cups. They go down Main Street, they're enjoying, I think they come in a 12-pack now. And they go and get in their car and they crash and kill somebody. The way the law sits now is it's a last bar served. The last bar you were at is the bar that takes the punishment. So they could go to the stage and have 10, but if their last one was at Poorhouse, that liability would land on me. That's nothing, that, that's, that's serious. That's very serious. Because if that's allowed on their credit card, because most people, that's how most people play, it's gonna be that we served them their last beer. But they're able, and it's legal, not to say they wouldn't do it anyway, but it would then be legal to, to leave our bar and do that. That, that puts all of us in a pretty tough spot. Also, I believe in front of council now is, might even be tonight, is the pocket park. We don't have funds for the police to maintain the park. We don't have funds for our city staff to pick up all the trash and stuff as it is. What's it gonna be like when our public works department's picking up empties, broken liquor bottles, cups, all over, all over town? There's a lot more to just saying, "Sure, let's be a party town" and everybody can walk around with their drinks and their cups and whatever. I don't know all the details, I only know the rough ones that go along with this. But there's a lot of things to think about. And it's not just college kids drinking. There's some serious liability questions that go along with that. And it goes even to the city. You know, I mean, not that they're not doing it now, but it would actually be legal to sit in Central Square Park and get schmammered. Right now, you'd get disorderly conduct, not saying that you wouldn't, but if the, you don't get it when you're, you could get it, actually, if you're walking around with an open container. There wouldn't be open container law, because it's allowed. So they could just, the problem that you're having on the pocket park, we're gonna have on Central Square. So I just think there's a lot of different angles to this. And I hope that the public, as well as all of you, consider all of that, but also the small business side of it and the liability that we could incur.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that this helps us recognize is that the private business owners are responsible people who do a good job with that.
Our liability insurance is very expensive. And so to have someone come to your bar and you're responsible, then they leave and they do that. That could really hurt somebody.
Thank you. I see, Councillor Remi?
I just wanted to clarify, because I did not explain this when I was doing it before and I should have, is that it does not allow for BYOB at all. If, every drink that's purchased, this has to be from a licensee. And they're not allowed to carry that cup that has the licensee's name on it in anywhere else. To your point, if somebody wanted to refill a cup that they got from somewhere with something, that would be illegal, very, very illegal. But it's not impossible. It's no different than them refilling the coffee cup they got at Combi's, though, and walking around with it. It would be harder to catch either. either way. But that is, it does not allow for BYOB. It has really specific rules on certain things. The, it has to clearly identify the licensee that it was sold by. It has to clearly display the logo of the social district. It can't be made of glass. The, no less than 12-point font has to say Drink Responsibly B21. Can't hold more than 16 ounces. Like, it's a very specific container. And it is not allowed to be BYOB. You're not allowed to carry it into another establishment. The only place you could carry that into is the place you bought it from. So if they had a Poorhouse cup, they could go back into Poorhouse, but they can't go anywhere else. So it is, it's a little different than that, but I understand the concern.
Sorry?
Would that mean that my customers don't have to carry their drinks over the patio?
All right. Any further comments on the question? I see hands in the room.
Warren Steinberg, still at 36 Concord Hill Drive. I actually just had a question. So if it's, we understood that if it's a yes vote, that city council would discuss policies and procedures on how it would all operate. It would take a long time. Those would be a lot of votes. My question is, if it's a no vote, would city councils still take the time out to develop those policies in order to prepare for if it were to come back two years later? Or would we be, be at the same spot we are now with a no vote in that we have no policies written, no one's thought about it, no one's developed any regulations, and we're at the mercy of whoever's on staff for that period of time?
Yeah. I, I, I think I could, but I would just assume if the city attorney wishes to address the question.
Just to the point of, would the city council pass regulations or rules about it if the vote was still no? They, they wouldn't have the authority because we, the voters would have said, no, you're not authorized to develop social districts. So we wouldn't have that legal authority here to start developing rules around it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Again, I think the point would be that in two years, the question could come back in that period of time. Other communities could have stepped forward and provided, you know, some test and evidence of something having been put in place. How did it work? And I'm sure if there were problems with it, we would all know. Okay. Seeing no further questions, comments, we'll close this public hearing. Thank you. Again, there will be no additional comments received by the city, and this question will appear as was just presented on the November 4th municipal ballot. Okay. We are moving on to nominations now. Could the clerk please read those that are for confirmation this evening?
Yes, we have the confirmation of Matthew Bolton to the Energy and Climate Committee to serve as an alternate in Slot 16 for a term to expire December 31, 2027. And we have to the Human Rights Committee Gregory Kleiner, serving as an alternate in Slot 14 for a term to expire December 31, 2026.
And I'd like to recognize Counselor Greenwald for a motion.
Move to confirm the nominations.
Seconded by Counsel Powers. Any comments, questions on these nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Welcome.
Okay.
Confirmations are welcome.
Yes, it does. Sorry.
It doesn't say that.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Faubalise?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yep.
So we have item C1, which is a communication. I'm going to ask that we bring that forward to confirm the resignation of Andrew Orem. And do you wish to read this?
Sure. We have a resignation from Andrew Orem. He was serving on our Congregate Living and Social Services Licensing Board. He had been a member on that board since December of 2021.
And so I'm bringing this forward so that we can consider the next nomination, put that on the table. But I'd like to recognize Counsel Greenwald for a motion to accept.
Thank you. Move to accept the resignation and express gratitude for time served.
Seconded by Counsel Powers. Now, a show of hands. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. And we'll bring forward a nomination.
And we have a nomination from the mayor this evening. And this is for Robert Hom to serve in Slot 1 of the Congregate Living and Social Services Licensing Board. And this would be a regular membership with a term to expire December 31, 2027.
Thank you very much. Counselor Greenwald for a motion. I'm sorry, this has got placed on, this move referred to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Mr. Hom is here. Just if anybody does not know him, Rob, if you'd just, thank you. And thanks for putting your name forward. Okay, consider that at the next meeting. We've got two other items of communication before us.
Yes, and we will be taking these together?
Yes, we will take these two together.
So we have two communications this evening. They are both related to the sale of 100 Church Street. The first is from Ken Cost. It includes a petition containing 25 signatures of East Keene residents that are opposed to the sale of 100 Church Street and propose a community stewardship plan. The second communication was submitted by Counselor Williams in opposition to the sale of 100 Church Street and suggesting a redesign of the space to incorporate elements to encourage public use, improve visibility, and discourage poor behavior.
So in consistency with our previous communications on this topic, I'll recommend we file these as informational and that that information would be shared back with the Municipal Services Committee at their next meeting to be considered with that action. Counsel Madison?
Your Honor, if I may, I'm going to request to be excused. I have a German guest who would like to go home.
Understood. Understood. Thank you. And, okay, these are informational. They'll be referred to MSFI for their next meeting. All right, moving along, we've got council committee reports. And would the clerk please read our first item?
And the first item we have is a Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee report relative to the Keene Snow Riders' request to use city property. And on a vote of five to zero, the Keene Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee recommends the Keene Snow Riders be granted permission to use the following locations on city property for a snowmobile trail: the right-of-way along the north side of Criff Road from Criff Court to Winchester Street; city property identified by tax map numbers 115-023, 109-027, and 204-001; the crossing of Winchester Street at Criff Road; and the crossing of Production Avenue approximately 200 plus or minus feet south of New Hampshire Route 9; as well as access to the Class 6, I'm sorry, Class 6 portion of the Old Gilson Road, starting approximately one mile from the Gilson Town Line and going north for the following purpose: for a snowmobile trail and under the following conditions: said use shall commence on December 15, 2025, and expire on March 30, 2026, and is subject to the following conditions: the signing of a revocable license and indemnification agreement, and the submission of a certificate of liability insurance in the amount of $1 million, naming the city of Keene as additional insured. In addition, the Keene Snow Riders, Inc., will be responsible, including associated costs, for furnishing, installing, and maintaining of all signage and markings, which shall be furnished and installed in accordance with the snowmobile trail standards published by New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs, and the manual for uniform traffic control devices. All signage and markings installed shall be removed from the city right-of-way and city property when there's no longer any snow cover. No structures, including but not limited to buildings, shelters, lights, displays, walls, et cetera, shall be permitted within the city right-of-way or on city property. No parking of motor vehicles or trailers, and no catering service activities of any kind shall be permitted within the right-of-way or on city property. Grooming shall not extend outside the right-of-way of Criff Road. Snow windows shall be groomed to provide adequate sight distances in conformance with AAS HTO standards, and a gentle sloping approach at all road and driveway intersections. No part of the city street paved surfaces may be used by off-highway recreational vehicles or their operators for any purpose other than direct crossing. And that Keene Snow Riders, Inc. shall be responsible for the repair of any damage, including costs, and the city right-of-way and property shall be, only be used when there is snow cover. All crossing of public rights-of-way shall be made and maintained as perpendicular with the right-of-way being crossed.
Well done. And I'd like to recognize Counselor Jones for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the intent of the committee report.
That was briefer.
Second.
Seconded, seconded by Counsel Filio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our, our annual petition to do this. There has been no changes from other years. It has gone through protocol. I want to remind you that even though it's on city right-of-way, they're not using the paved path. They're going alongside of it on city right-of-way. These snow riders create a great service for us. They do a lot of grooming on our snow trails, excuse me, on our trails when there's snow, all the way up to the Walpo line and then some. They do a wonderful job. And it's, and it's also brings some business to Keene because when they do come to Keene, they go to the stores, they go to the restaurants, and they, I think this is a win-win.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments from counselors? We've seen this come before us in whittles of years previously. Okay. At this point, we just need a show of hands. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have one other item.
This is a Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee report relative to a request from The Perch for permission to serve alcohol at their sidewalk cafe. And on a vote of five to zero, the Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee recommends that The Perch be granted permission to serve alcoholic beverages in connection with their sidewalk cafe license, subject to the customary licensing requirements of the council, compliance with the requirements of Sections 461191 through 461196 of the City Code, and compliance with any requirements of the New Hampshire Liquor Commission. This license shall expire on November 1, 2026. I think it's really March 1. I'm not sure why it says that. So I'm going to, I think that's a Scrivener error. And the reason that you see that is because we, when the snow and street maintenance period begins, yeah. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Let's get a motion on the floor. Counselor Jones?
I think we did make that correction at the committee meeting.
Okay.
It was worded wrong, handed to us, but I think we orally said it the right way for the minutes. That being said, I move the intent to the committee report.
Seconded by Counsel Filio. And Counsel Jones, do you wish to speak to this?
Just an understanding, this is a new business in town. The only reason it's coming to the city council because it's their first time around asking for a license for their, for their cafe, sidewalk cafe, to be able to serve liquor. That's the only time we see it. They understand that it is a renewable license and it is a revocable license. It's, they've met all protocols, and we want to see them go through.
Okay. Anybody want to address this, the date issue?
Yeah. The, the motion says license shall expire on November 1, but it should say March 1. That's when, when we begin the snow removal in the downtown. So that was the Scrivener error.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's not the one we corrected. Now we did.
So we see November 1 in the motion. Let's say March 1.
I think we can accept it as a Scrivener correction. Yes.
Except if I major the motion?
Yes, it is.
And the second, yes. Good. Okay, we have the motion on the floor. Any questions further? All those in favor? And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the manager's report.
Just a couple of updates for you this evening. The library has just launched a new online resource. It's the Peterson Test and Career Prep software. And this is a software that people can log on to use. So you just go to the website. And it helps you prepare for tests, like your SAT, if you have a student that's preparing for tests. But also, there are tests on, on there that you can prepare for related to plumbing, electrician, a firefighter exam, a CDL license, a paramedic exam, an EMT exam. So there's a lot of value from this tool. And so you'll start to see some information coming out from the library and trying to get people to utilize it. And then just one other update for you this evening, and it's related to the Verizon Tower that will soon be installed on city property. City staff have been working with the various stakeholders to finalize a lease agreement for the construction of a Verizon Tower on city-owned property along Arch Street. The council authorized this action in April of 2024. The current plan is to locate the tower on a wooded parcel owned by the city water fund at 84 Arch Street. As part of the agreement, the city will install municipal emergency response equipment on the tower. The use of this space is being considered as partial compensation within the overall lease rate, which has not been finalized yet. Placement of city equipment on the tower will enhance communications and address existing dead zones and adjacent areas, including coverage improvements at the Keene High School and close proximity to the Menaduck Marketplace. We hope to have the lease finalized in the next couple of months. Those are my updates this evening.
Counsel Jones?
Can I just ask, is this one of those 35-foot 5G towers like we've been seeing around?
No, this is a regular cell tower. It's not a 5G tower, and it could have 5G in the future, but this is a, a cell tower. It's 135 feet.
Okay, thank you.
So we actually have the petitioner from the last item here. I'm curious, does he, is he effective now? Like, he could go open his patio right now? I've just never known how that works.
He has his... As long as he has his... Oh, go ahead. Go. He'll need to sign a new license agreement that incorporates the alcohol service. And that's something that he can reach out to our office tomorrow if you want. And we'll take care of it for you.
Counsel Fabalise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question about something that the manager didn't cover, but that I've been thinking about a little bit lately. We have applied for this SAFER grant. There was some discussion about was it going to come out to apply for, and then it did. And do we have a time run on one we might know if we...
Yeah. Thank you for that question. We should have known by now, but because of the government shutdown, we have not got notification. I did hear that some communities have been notified prior to the shutdown, like within a day or two of the shutdown. We are not one of those communities. So I don't, I can't say for sure if that means we didn't get the grant or it just didn't happen before the government shutdown.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got three items that we'll take together, resignations, which is something that we face at this time in the year as we approach a new calendar year and new appointments. I'd just remind all counselors, if you know of people that wish to have an interest, if they just have an interest in, please refer them to the manager or me. And we will be following up either through the staff or through me with people to see if we can recruit them.
Good. And this evening, we have three resignations from boards and commissions. The first is from Brandon Marklon, who is resigning from the planning board. The second from Emma Seamer, who is resigning from Human Rights Committee. And the third is from Kathleen Malloy, and she is resigning from the zoning board of adjustment.
Counsel Greenwald for a motion.
Move to accept the resignations and express appreciation for their service.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Powers, or sorry, Counsel Tobin. Thank you. All right. Any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those in favor? Carries unanimously, thank you. And we move on to more time options. Can I shortcut this?
Sure.
The, the more time option is recommended on the request to use city property for downtown festivals, and more time is granted. We have no items for first or second reading of new ordinances. Move on to Item K for resolutions and recognitions.
Yes, and we have a communication from our Human Resources Director. And the recommendation is that we adopt R202533 in appreciation of Christopher L. Simons upon his retirement, and we have Resolution R202533, a resolution in appreciation of Christopher L. Simons upon his retirement.
And I'd like to recognize Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor, move for the adoption of Resolution 202533.
Counselor Tobin? Counselor Greenwald, okay, seconded by Counselor Greenwald. Trying to get Counselor Tobin in there. Next one.
I was just coughing. Please.
All right, guys. Okay. These guys keep getting younger and younger, and they retire. I don't understand it, but Chris Simons has had a very nice career in law enforcement. He started out in Marlboro, and moved on to Swansea, where he lives, and came over to Keen Department. And he has a total of 23 years of service in law enforcement, 18 at the Keen Police Department, and he did several years, I believe, in one of our summer programs in the Public Works Department. And very interestingly enough, in his next career upon retirement, he's getting back into that business, so he'll still be serving the public. He comes from a family with public service experience, you know, he began as a police officer in Marlboro, and business has changed quite a bit since his first days. When in Marlboro, you were the only police officer working. And at least when you work a night shift around here, you've got, got a few people to have, to work with you. He was a member of the honor guard, very important role, and he showed leadership whenever that, that group had to get together and, and serve the public. And the rest of his achievements as an officer are listed in this resolution. He's the father of four daughters. And not having, having had sons, but now have granddaughters, I know what he's going through. But he's right in there with them in the sports. They, they're all involved in sports, so he's served as a sports coach, along at the Junior Swampats, their softball program, and he's always made time to be the coach, and that's not too easy when you work in shift work, so compliments to him. Wish him well in his new career. I'm sure you're gonna see him around the town at Swansea. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think I've met this person coming down the hill in Marlboro. Anyway. Any comments? All those in favor of this resolution? Show of hands. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
And we have another report from the Human Resources Director. This is also in honor of a retirement. We have Ordinance O R202534 in appreciation of Todd R. Fernswood upon his retirement.
Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor, for, move for the adoption of 202534.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Tobin, thank you. Counselor Powers?
Todd's worked for the city for about 18 years, and I don't, I don't really know him, but I'm sure he's waited on me many trips to the recycling center. You probably all have been waited on. But when I asked about, you know, what he does in his job, and what he's gonna go on to do, this is how his supervisor described him. "A straight-up worker bee, reliable, friendly, caring, and always willing to do a good job. What else could you ever ask for from, from any employee?" And he was, you know, in kind of a tough position, he was trying to serve the public's needs, and he had to say no many, many times. "You can't bring that, you can't do this," but he did a great job. He's, wanna retire after 18 years of service here. His prior work was in, in an area that brought some knowledge to the Public Works Department, so he became, just because he would do a good job, is the guy to go to when they needed some assistance with the safety issues, alarms, intervention activities. Again, emphasizing that he was a great employee. Please wish him well if you happen to make the last trip up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the resolution as presented? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We have no, non-public tonight, but there is a motion that we enter into a, a private session with our attorney for legal advice. I, meeting is adjourned.
Don't, don't leave, though.
Yes.